I'd like to call the April 28th session of the Sangerville Select Board Meeting to order. Full Board is here, Dale Gray, Tom Brown, Melissa Randall, and Dr. Ken Woodbury, our Town Manager. Without objection, I'd like to recess the meeting for a special town meeting. Go ahead, please. No objections.
In the name of the State of Maine, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Sangerville, in the county of Escataquas, and the State of Maine qualified to vote in Town Affairs to assemble at the Town Hall Community Room on Thursday, April 28, 2016, at 6:30 in the evening, then and there, to act on the following Articles to it. Number one, Article One, to choose a moderator to preside at said meeting. Have nominations?
I nominate Paul Davis.
Second. Any other nominations?
I need nomination seats.
Thank you. And...
I'll second.
Who did it? And I need three votes cast, please, three ballots cast. And Alvin, I'm sorry, I didn't bring any in.
We need one more ballot.
That's why I want to get rid of those wooden stuff.
No, you did use yours for you.
Thank you.
The one in my office, I bought my son a chair.
Paul Davis has been nominated.
Has been elected. Has been elected.
Uh-huh.
Been elected.
Has been elected. Thank you.
Doctor. I drag out a set of this.
I, Paul Davis, agree to this agreement, as well as to what the Constitution of the United States, and of this state, in all places, I am committed to the citizens of the land. I, Paul Davis, agree to this agreement, as well as to, faithfully discharge, to the best of my ability, the duties incumbent upon me as moderator of this meeting, according to the Constitution and laws of the state, to help God.
It's the 28th?
Yes, it is.
Good evening, everybody. Let's all stand up and say I pledge allegiance to the flag of the nation that we're talking about. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Let's move right along. We have quite a bit here to do, and we certainly have a good crowd. Looks like there's some interest. Article Two, to adopt the Maine Moderator's Manual published by the Maine Municipal Association as the authority on rules and procedures for conducting this actual town meeting. Can we have a motion?
I'd make a motion that we adopt the Maine Moderator's Manual.
We have a second?
Please.
Discussion. Hearing done, all those in favor, please raise your hands. All those opposed, vote Article Three, to ascertain if non-resident speakers are present, and whether or not inhabitants wish to call upon them to be heard. Well, our Town Manager is a non-resident, so I know that he's not present. Can we have a motion on this, please?
I'd make a motion that we have non-residents speaking.
We have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing done, all those in favor? All those opposed, it's a vote Article Four. Whereas Trio did not provide timely notice of his dues increase for 2016 to be reviewed by the Budget Committee, and whereas the amount stated in the annual Town Meeting warrant Article 17 did not match with the Select Board and Budget Committee recommendation, now therefore be it resolved to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate from undesignated funds, an amount to increase general government contractual services by $225 to accommodate the increased cost of Trio for 2016. And the Board of Selectmen recommend approval. Can we have a motion, please?
Motion to adjourn.
With the $225 figure?
Yep.
We have a second?
No.
Discussion? Yes, sir. I call point of order here. We're having a town meeting, and there's a conflict of different information that went out. I got a phone call last night at five minutes past nine, said this meeting was canceled. I checked the webpage, sure enough, it was on it for May 10, on the town's webpage. So, what's going on?
I don't know. We don't know how it got on there.
Somebody hacking into the system?
Could've been.
I don't think it's legal to hold a meeting.
This meeting was posted, and that's what's required by law. It has nothing to do with whether it's on a website, or in a newspaper, or anything else. The only requirement for a special town meeting is that it be posted. This meeting was duly posted.
Yeah, it was duly posted, but the last Select Board meeting that you had, it was stated that MRC gave us an extension. The meeting would be canceled. So naturally, when you read on the website, events and meetings, and it says May 10, I figured it was canceled. But luckily, I'm in the circle of communications, and I found out afterwards, this morning, that it was being canceled.
Even what was said in the website, it said that there was a special town meeting on May 10. It did not say that the meeting tonight was canceled.
It said the meeting tonight was a Select Board meeting. Only.
No, it didn't say only. The word "only..."
It said Select Board meet tonight at 6:30.
And that's true, and we just opened it up. It did not say the word "only."
It did not say town meeting. I've got a friend out there.
We don't have to notify the residents of the town for a special town meeting by website.
Right.
It has to be posted. It was posted.
Not to cancel it, it don't have to be posted.
There's no... The word "canceled" was not used on the website.
Well, when you look at a special town meeting on the 10th, you presume it's canceled. The meeting tonight was canceled.
You presumed incorrectly.
If something's going on incorrectly...
Chummy, it's your presumption. The word "canceled" was not on the website.
No, I know it wasn't.
Okay.
I was trying to word for word what it said.
I know what it said. I took it off at 9:30 this morning.
Right.
Well, the meeting was advertised that it was supposed to be, is that correct?
Correct.
And therefore, we've started, we're going to continue with the meeting. There can be a determination made with whoever, the attorney or whoever tomorrow, if you want, to make sure that we operate legally, as far as I can see. If it was posted, I believe it requires two weeks posted. I saw it up to Robinson Store the other day. It was posted, and we are here in the meeting, so we're going to move on.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. We have a motion on the floor to accept Article Four with the price of $225. Is there any other discussion? Anybody? If there isn't any, if you favor the article, would you raise your hands, please? If you oppose it, raise your hands. Article Five, whereas the Town Hall has been storing over 100 sets of three folding wooden chairs, and whereas these chairs are heavy and cumbersome to move, as well as being uncomfortable to sit on, and whereas these chairs are unlikely to be used in the foreseeable future, and whereas the community room is frequently... is used frequently, and does not have padded chairs, now therefore, here is all, that the Select Board is authorized to sell up to one-half of the wooden chairs stored on the second and third floors of the Town Hall, and to use any proceeds from the sale to purchase padded, folding, or stackable chairs for the community row. And the Board of Selectmen recommend approval. Can we have a motion, please?
I'd make a motion as read.
I have a motion to accept it, and we have a second to accept the article as I read it. Discussion?
I could just say something, because I've been working on this project for a little while. We took account, Town Manager and I, we came up with a seating amount of 407 seats available with these folding wooden chairs that go back quite a ways. There's two different styles. The one that seems to be the best are the ones that Chummy, Regina, and Warren are sitting on over here. They seem to be fairly comfortable with sitting in them, okay? Now, some of the other chairs that are up there are in terrible shape. I mean, they're... Some of the laminated ones are just... They really need to go. You know, they're not worth fixing, it's an expensive thing to fix. But the idea was that if and when we ever do get to use the second floor again for events, that we can use some of those chairs, the better ones like that. So that's why we're advocating to save half of them, which would give us about 200 seatings, which would be, I think, plenty for up there. So... And we'll sell the rest, and hopefully get some nice, comfortable seats instead of the hard metal ones that a lot of you are sitting on now.
He answered my question.
He answered your question, okay. Any other discussion? Anybody? Hearing seen done, if you favor the article as I read it, please raise your hands. If you oppose it, raise your hands. If you favor the article, please raise your hands.
I got 25.
I got 26. I must be right, you're wrong.
Hit him up, Bill.
Raise them right up, folks, so we can see them, okay?
One hand only. I told earlier, I'm... 26.
Paul was right.
I got 26 again. And if you oppose it, raise your hands, please. It passes. Yeah, it passes.
Excuse me, Paul?
Yes.
We might run into a problem. We've got a dozen people out here in the hallway, and when it comes time for a vote, I don't... I've never had that situation before.
I didn't know there was anybody out there.
There's ten other people out there.
They want to vote, they need to...
The teenager right here.
They need to come in and vote.
We might run into a little problem counting.
Yeah, yeah, well, there's a need to, is to count up the outside folks, how's that? I counted 11. There's 11 in the polls.
Yes.
Let's ask them out there. If they all voted for it, it wouldn't make any difference. There's 10 people up there? Oh, we had 26. That wouldn't make any difference. Okay, Article Six, whereas the town's agreement with PERC for the disposal of trash buyers in 2018, and whereas there are two competing proposals, Merck, Philibert, and PERC, and whereas Dover-Foxcroft is expected to contract after 2018 with MRC, which I believe is Municipal Review Committee, know what that stands for?
Yes.
And whereas all of the town's trash goes to Dover-Foxcroft now, therefore be it resolved to one, authorize the town to continue as a member of the Municipal Review Committee incorporated, organized as a main nonprofit corporation, enacted as a regional association pursuant to Title 13B and Title 38 of the main revised statutes as amended, and specifically Section 1304-B,括号5A of Title 38, for the purpose on managing and facilitating solid waste disposal. And two, to adopt, ratify, and confirm the restated Articles of Cooperation and the restated bylaws of the MRC in substantially the form on file with the town clerk at the town office, and three, to authorize the town... Excuse me. To authorize the town to execute and deliver a municipal joiner agreement with the MRC in substantially the form on file with the town clerk at the town office, a municipal joiner agreement pursuant to which the town has... will become a joining member of the MRC as defined therein, and deliver its municipal solid waste for disposal through a waste management facility being developed by Fiber Right LLC and its affiliates collectively in Amden, Maine, or other waste disposal facility. And four, to authorize the MRC to take certain actions on behalf of the town as set forth in the municipal joiner agreement. And five, to authorize a majority of the selectmen or their duly authorized designees as a representative of the town and to educate... execute, excuse me, execute and deliver the municipal joiner agreement on behalf of the town, and to exercise and deliver on behalf of the town conjunction therewith such other documents, and to take such further action as they may deem necessary or appropriate in order to effect the transactions contemplated by the municipal joiner agreement. And the Board of Selectmen recommend approval. Can we have a motion?
Make a motion as completely read.
We have a second? We have a second. Discussion?
What about... Is there a financial impact on the town with this agreement, or any changes with this agreement?
Mr. Manager?
Kathy Con... What? Out there. Kathy Conlow is from Bangor, and is here to answer any questions about MRC. It's either PERC, or it's MRC, which is Fiber Right. The main issue with Sangerville, if you boil it all down, is that we send our trash to Dover. Wear the tail, Dover's the dog. And right now, we're going where the dog goes. Dexter's going there. All the other towns around are also going with MRC. If we were not to go where Dover goes, we would then have to come up with our own trash collection. It's not part of our budget. The issues of PERC and MRC are very confusing, conflicting, and unfortunately, we don't have a lot of choice. This resolution was written in collaboration with Dover-Foxcroft, and this is the resolution that is being voted on by Dover-Foxcroft, is on their warrant for their town vote coming up. The way the rules were originally written, if you had a town meeting, scheduled town... your scheduled town meeting was before May 1st, you had to then decide if you wanted to go with MRC. If you did not, and you decided later after May 1st, and did not decide at your regular town meeting before May 1st, then you were not going to be a charter member of MRC. And there's some goodies that go with being a charter member. MRC voted a couple weeks ago to change their deadline date from May 1st to...
June 30th.
June 30th. But the way that Dover and we have worded our resolution is that it asks the town to authorize, in effect, the Select Board to go with MRC. If Dover decides that they are not going to go with MRC, then the Select Board will not vote to go with MRC, if the town authorizes them to take the action to go with MRC. The main thing was to protect the town of Sangerville's, so that we don't get into the trash business. Whether PERC is better than MRC, or MRC is better than PERC, a lot of discussion has been... And Tom has gone to a lot of towns, and the meetings about PERC and MRC and everything. But it all boils down to, wear the tail, and we have to follow the dog. And we want to make sure that Sangerville's interests are protected either way. So voting now, we didn't know we could've voted later, but voting now, we don't have to have another special town meeting, allows us to... If that's where Dover goes, then this board can vote to go with MRC, if this is your wishes. And we are a charter member, and we get all the venues and the goodies. You're on the board of MRC, and so she's kind enough to come here to explain the differences and the benefits of going with MRC, which is Fiber Right Building a new plant with a new technology, tried and true in Europe. One plant in Virginia, but it's relatively new technology. But again, wear the tail, Dover's the dog. We're just sniffing around, finding where it'll go.
Thank you.
You want me to explain it?
Yeah, you might.
Okay. All right, thank you. My name is Kathy Conlow, I'm the City Manager of Bangor, a volunteer board member for the MRC. So, there are a lot of towns in the region, and we've been given a lot by board members. So you probably didn't get the star board member, but you got many. So, the MRC, the choices are really between the MRC and PERC, but the MRC is a nonprofit association of 178... 187 municipalities that represent our interest in solid waste. Reason being is that we are a rural geography, even Bangor, and it's difficult to get enough mass to deal with our garbage in an affordable way. So, back in the 90s, the MRC was formed because of some problems with the PERC plant at the time. They built it, they said you'd get a $9 a ton, they changed that, all of a sudden it's $40 a ton. The MRC came along as a means to protect the municipalities in that way. They hired the gentleman George Aronson, who has been a consultant with us, and Greg Lunder, have overseen the operations of the PERC plant to ensure that it's economical and efficient, and it's delivering the returns to the municipalities. It's been a good deal for... Since early 2000, we've received their subsidies. I think a lot of you have heard about that. That's about $20 million a year. On December 31st, 2018, all that goes away. The partnership under the agreement is dissolved. There's no partnership that can continue after 2018. It's a new world out there, the Amerisubsidies are gone. In 2011, the MRC received a letter from the PERC folks that said if you can't pay $1.10 a ton and allow for the importation of solid waste, which was largely subsidized by the municipalities, then they could no longer deal with us. And the municipalities at the time, the MRC board I wasn't on there, said, "We just don't think that this region can afford $110 a ton." George Aronson, who is probably one of the smartest guys I've met, reviewed those numbers and really verified that 110 is the minimum tip thing. So, we put out an RFP at the time, again, I wasn't on the board, this predates me a little bit, but starting to move into my time. We got 15 responses. Those technologies were reviewed by our experts and by board members, and they landed on this Fiber Right technology. I... I'm not a scientist either, so you hear a lot about whether the technology works or the technology doesn't work. The MRC, none of us are experts, we're public works directors and city managers, we don't know this stuff either. So, the university was hired, the chemical engineering department was hired, doing independent reviews, their pulpit paper group, Habib... not Habib, who's the other guy, Ahmet Pensey, the BioFares Products Research. They... We sent a team down there to review the technology in Virginia. And what Ahmet Pensey came back and said in his team was that the technology was sound. There's nothing magical about the technology in many ways, it's similar to pulping operations that already have been pretty widespread, but closing down in this region. So, with the idea that the technology was going to work, the financial analysis that George overlooked, and has done for us, and has done very well by us, because we've all received lots of rebates on our solid waste disposal from energy, said, "We can do this at $70 a ton. Charter municipalities, there are some reserve funds set up, so we can lower this to $65 a ton. If we get over certain thresholds, there'll be returns, rebates back to the municipalities in the same way that the PERC plant delivered rebates to the municipalities." So, we've proceeded with this technology, hoping to get everybody signed on by May 1st, but not realizing how many folks still had May and June town meetings. We don't have... We have two key consultants, and the rest of us are moving on volunteer labor. So, I'll answer any questions. Am I missing anything? Can you think of? I'm happy to answer any questions.
Chairman?
What happens if the bottom drops out of that new plant? You know, the financing or some type of thing happen?
So, there's a couple of reserve funds. The MRC has always held money in trust for the municipalities. Bangor has about $4 million in trust, other municipalities depending on their ways. Those have been reserves that have always been used to backfill if things go wrong. So, the backup plan on this facility is if something goes wrong, we have an agreement with Norwich Walk. Norwich Walk is the only licensed solid waste, municipal solid waste landfill in the state. There's no way to get our trash to JRL. So, we have an agreement with Norwich Walk that's good for 10 years. I realize that it's a 15-year agreement, but we have a 10-year agreement with Norwich Walk. So that's our backup plan.
Do we have an agreement with that Agra thing that we're going to have to do extensive sorting of our rubbish?
No, we don't. So, the Fiber Right, and you're kind of in the science area that's beyond my ability, but let me try a little bit. The Fiber Right facility takes all your garbage. So I don't know if you have pay-as-you-throw curbside, I'm not sure what your arrangements are here. Let me take, for example, Bangor. We send our garbage curbside. I think it's anywhere between 25 and 40 percent of your garbage is organic waste. If you were to source, separate your organic waste, you could send that to exeter, certain kinds of organic waste. Fiber Right takes all your organic waste, in fact, at once your organic waste, and then it uses that to create a biogas. There are agreements that I'm not privy to, and all that'll be flushed out before we build anything or do anything. If anything's built, or any final arrangements are made between MRC, that they have sale agreements in place for their gas, and that everything is moved in the way it's supposed to.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks.
Others? Anybody?
Paul? If I could ask, the last figure that I heard was that Fiber Right needed 150,000 tons, give or take...
Yep.
...per year. The last I heard also was that you're somewhere just a little bit over halfway...
Yep.
...on it, and just a gut feeling that you're going to meet the...
Yes.
...quota, the commitment to reach 150,000 tons.
Yep. So the only numbers we ran at the time were 150,000-ton threshold. Georgia's running lower numbers, and there's a lot of commercial waste out there that doesn't necessarily belong to contracts of municipalities. Bangor has the flow control, which controls the destination of its solid waste, but not everybody... not everybody does.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? I'm on Oklahoma. Kind of bad, I see you can't be here.
Just one more thing, Paul, if I could follow up on that. If you don't reach your tonnage, then you'll be acquiring trash to make up the difference from where?
No. The idea behind the whole Fiber Right facility was that it was scalable, it was economically viable, and it was scalable to this region, that it... It didn't depend on out-of-state waste. It'll depend on how small we can scale it. If not, the only real solution for any of us is Norwich Walk. Because the new license for PERC, as I understand it, only allows 25,000 tons bypass as opposed to 80,000 tons. And we're just not seeing anything that would prove that the PERC plant is going to be viable.
Now, did you mention in your presentation that you're expecting PERC to possibly go up to $100 or so per ton for the tipping fee?
In 2011, what their last offer, when negotiations sort of fell apart at the time, again predating me, there was a letter that said if it's not $110 a ton and we're not allowed to import waste, in which the $110, $55 a ton. So we would allow for the importation of, say, Massachusetts waste at $55 a ton, which would obviously be subsidized by main waste, by our waste, at $110 a ton. It's heavily subsidized now. Out-of-state waste is heavily subsidized now by the municipalities and by these Amerisubsidies. It would be fully subsidized by us.
I don't know where the $100 per ton tipping fee came from, but the presentation that they had at the Parkman Special Town Meeting to take the vote, it was stated by a fellow from PERC that it was somewhere around $84 and possibly MRC was, Fiber Right was going to be somewhere $70, $72?
Well, it's 70 for people who sign on, 72 for people who wait. It is $85 is what they're purporting. What happens anytime somebody gives us something is that our analysts go back and take a look at it from the municipal standpoint and say, "Does it work?" And our analysts are saying $85 a ton with 150,000 ton of PERC will never work.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? We have a motion on the floor to accept the article as I read it. If there is no other discussion, if you favor the article, please raise your hands. If you oppose it, raise your hands. It's a vote. Article seven. Whereas the chipper in Guilford is no longer available to the town, meaning Sangerville, and whereas the availability of a chipper owned by the town will result in a significant increase in control of obtrusive tree limbs and small trees, now therefore be it resolved that the board selectmen is authorized to purchase a chipper in an amount not to exceed $15,000 appropriated from the public works capital reserve account. And the selectmen approve this. Recommend approval. And we have a motion, please.
Let him have a look.
We have a motion to approve the article, accept it as I read it. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion. Mr. Rowell.
Well, it strikes me that $15,000 will buy a whole lot of man hours. And anything that won't go through the least, a least chipper that I, what I've heard is that it can't take anything over four inches. Well, at four inches, something like that, that's pretty good firewood. And we do burn firewood up the town garage. So, you know, what's the point of spending $15,000 on a piece of machinery you only use once in a while? And furthermore, if you got to make the firewood out of that drops, you've got the benefit of burning it, even though it may not be very much. Every little bit helps.
Other discussion? Chairman?
The Newport rental has what they call a nine-inch chipper that they ran out $780 a week or $195 a day. And I'm sure a week rental will keep anything that our public works crew will ever cut. And that's over 15 years to pay back if you buy a $15,000 machine. And them machines cost $35,000, $45,000. No. So what you pay for Dan's $15,000 is going to be really used. Charlie Cleese bought two of them. He sold one to, oh, the tree guy there that you fell in love with.
Engstrom.
Engstrom. He sold one to Stevie Engstrom. And Steve was lucky. He got a pretty good one. Charlie blew the motor. So I'm afraid we're going to hand him another piece of junk.
Other discussion? Anybody?
Paul.
Mrs. Smith?
I just have a question on the timing of this warrant article. Why wasn't this brought up at the town meeting a few weeks ago?
Something in this folks that to answer. Does anyone have an answer to that?
We didn't know.
They didn't know, they say. They didn't know that the chipper in Guilford was not available?
Right. Another. There's a lot of discussion about bad trees. Rory died because of a tree falling in the road. This is an attempt to have a cheap solution to an ongoing problem. We only have, what, about $2,500, $2,800 in our budget for tree removal in town and that's paying Engstrom to come take a big one down. This is an opportunity to get our guys out to take care of some of the little ones before they get to be big ones. And that doesn't preclude them from taking the stuff back to the garage and burning the big stuff. This is just giving them the tool to go out. And Ken is now the de facto road commissioner. So he's fully committed to cleaning up the big stuff on the side of the road. This may not be the best solution out there and we're Sangerville. We cut our coat to fit our claw. It's an opportunity for us to try to get some of the stuff done. If it doesn't work, a year or two, we can sell it on down the road. But giving the opportunity to make it work.
Other discussion? Yes.
What does our rental history look like? How many days does it take a year? Chairman brought up a $795 ton. What does it cost us so far? And how often have we in fact used it?
Have answers to that?
2000, let's see. One year, we spent $1,200. Then for a couple of years, we used the chipper from Guilford. In exchange, they use, or we use for them, the Wheeler. During 2013 to 14 and using Guilford's chipper, it was approximately 150 hours. Sometimes we've been able to get Charleston Correctional Crew. Chummy makes a good point. I'm not arguing against Chummy's way of looking at it. $15,000, if we were lucky, would buy a half-decent used chipper. We're looking at something like a nine-inch. It would take some. If we go into Dover, the best we can get is one of the small chippers. We'd have to go down to Dexter. It means we got to take the time to go down there, haul it back here.
Might be a lot less than $15,000.
Yeah, it's having something available that we can use when we're ready to use it so that we don't have to decide, well, Wednesday we're going to go to Dover, I mean to Dexter and get the chipper. And then it turns out it rains that day. And to take a whole week and just chip, there are other things that need to be done. The trouble with public works is you're, first you're doing here, you're doing over here. Different things come up. It's the availability. It's, you know, Chummy's got a good point. It would be a big help if we really want to get some of this brush taken care of. Another thing that we're going to be looking at when the bids come in on roadside mowing is maybe looking at the possibility of, instead of the sickle bar that we've been using over the past several years, is to use the Berkstrom, the flail, which will reach in and just mow everything and anything down. I've talked to a couple of towns that have done that and that's been very successful in beating this brush back. Because the Alders and the other stuff keep coming in and the sickle bar can't handle that. So.
Do I come in? I'm just there.
Yes, sir.
There. I work Charleston Correctional where I'm not representing them. I have done roadside for all towns around here for 16 years. That flail you're talking about, I've had to go back to three towns and snowmobile clubs to cut the stops there. It's really not a great solution. It makes a mess. Makes a mess.
Well, the areas where we're doing it, not for snowmobiles, so.
Well, no, no, all towns.
I mean, it is, the chipper is our best solution.
I agree with you, yeah, yes.
But they're expensive and we can't afford a new one. So it's up to you folks to decide.
Mr. Newt, Mr. Toby?
We can't afford an old one. These are very high-maintenance pieces of machinery. They're precision. Have to be set up. You have to know what you're doing. The cost to have a mechanic come in and set this thing up and keep it running is going to be astronomical. Knives are very expensive. Just the maintenance alone, I don't know if you would get your money and savings from the, what you would spend on rental, let alone the purchase of the machine. And you could cut wood for quite a number of days before you'd ever have to go chip it. Before you had a whole day's worth to chip. And a lot of that brush could be lugged into the woods rather than out to the road to be chipped if you're in the wooded area. It will rot in in a couple of years. Only in certain areas you have to chip the brush. But it's a very high-maintenance machine and I don't think we can afford to use one, let alone a new one. It's going to be very costly.
We went in with Guilford or we shared Guilford's chipper and they're no longer going to let us share that. Would they be willing to share if we purchased one? Or a couple of other towns?
Well, they have theirs already, so they're all set. I don't think they're going to be interested in buying another one, Toby. If that's what you mean.
They don't want us to use the one they have.
Right. It was just a temporary arrangement.
I see. Okay.
But Paul, if I could say something.
Why don't you stand up?
Is that we have it in the article as up to $15,000. Doesn't mean we have to spend or we shouldn't spend right up to the top dollar amount. And I think if I'm not mistaken, Peter may have some information. We did get some information on at least one that was around $10,500 or so. Ken has it?
I have the question, yeah.
So we're not, obviously not trying to, just like with the budget, we're not trying to spend every dollar in the budget. We're always trying to hold back and keep it in the black a little bit. So.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead, Bead, and tell me.
As far as the maintenance, there isn't a lot to it. I talked to Jeff Libby from Guilford about his chipper. He says a brand-new set of knives is about $150 for his chipper. Okay, that's not that much. Okay, he goes through with the set, five years. He says he reshoppings them once a year. They're two-sided. You flip them over and there isn't a lot of setup. Yeah, you've got to put them in there just right and do it. It's not that hard to do. Change your oil and filter, just like the cat. That's all there is. It's diesel motor. Unless you get lucky, Chummy, that you pick a bad one. But most generally, diesel motor's pretty good. We all know that. The hydraulic systems, grease them. There isn't much trouble. To go back to what Ken said on it. If I rented a chipper as much as I used Guilford's chipper in the last two years, it would have been about $1,200 a year. I mean, not $2,500 a year. The one I, he had referred to, that was the one I had rented. In fact, was rented the year before I used Guilford's. So. Any other questions?
Chairman, you have a discussion?
Two things concern me too. One is last year, you had over $44,000, actually $56,000, but we won't go there. It's $44,000 left over the budget of work that he didn't have. He was a tired man, didn't have time to do. So where are they going to get time to run this chipper when they had work that they didn't have time to do? And another thing, we bought a slightly used truck for around $4,500 and we've got about $14,000 in it now because of the breakdown. But the public don't know it because it goes into repair account. It don't go in the initial purchase account. It's like a chipper. You pay $10,000, $12,000 for it. Put a new motor in it, have to put a drum on it or something. You could end up around $20,000 and still have an old machine. Personally myself, I'd rather have somebody else take the chance of it breaking down and forgive them $1,000, I'll go run it. She blows up, get on the horn, hey, your machine just blow out. No fall to mind.
Others? Anybody?
When the time comes, maybe a bit of a pizzling. But I'd like to make a motion for a written mallet. Because we got people out here we can't even see.
If you have a written mallet, you don't need to make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Stafford?
Do we no longer have access to the Charleston Correctional Facility crew?
You do.
I believe we do.
I can answer that. Yeah, you do. Oh, we don't have a chipper. We do not have a chipper. I plan to someday, but then, and I've done a lot of research on chipper's like Peter has. The expense of these newer ones is very minimal. Got 12-inch chipper with a diesel motor, I'm telling you, it'd last this town forever. And another thing I think would happen is that you would be able to get, in three to five years, if you've got your own chipper like Guilford, they don't have problems with roadside brushing. They got a hold of it. They got it done. So now it only takes a few days a year and it's done.
Because you had a crew that worked.
Paul?
Other discussion?
Isn't anybody, no one?
Yes, ma'am.
Just out of curiosity, why won't Guilford let us use theirs anymore?
I have no idea.
Because we were on a reciprocal deal. I don't understand.
I have no idea. You know? Peter knows.
I didn't get an exact reason. They just said, they just didn't want us to use it anymore.
I had met with the town manager and asked him and he just said we'd rather keep it here.
It says they can do that, I guess. Yes.
Just one question. Do you have to do OSHA training in order to operate it?
Paul?
Chummy, how it's built now?
Didn't Guilford buy a burno? Yes, they did.
Guilford has a burno?
That was years ago.
Yeah, but I mean, they've always had a sense of burno. They didn't buy somebody else's from them.
No.
We don't.
But we don't have that money.
Yeah, I know, but I bought used equipment and spent somebody else's from them. God's money.
Mrs. Stafford?
Does the liability insurance go up more for us if we have one of those? Are they more dangerous?
There's liability insurance. I have no idea. I don't think anybody else does. Somebody here?
Just in reference to the Charleston crew, they're pretty, I mean, those guys work great. I've worked with some of them and they do a real good job. But there's a limited amount of time that we can use them. Now, I know from the historical society that we've had certain times when we'd love to have them over there, but we just couldn't get them into the schedule. You guys are busy and that's a good sign. But it's not like it's on an on-call basis where you just call it up, Charleston, and say, "Hey, I need a crew today, a four or five guys or whatever." It's got to be scheduled in advance.
You had a chipper those days like that could happen. Nowadays, you know, I get a window when it's raining for a few days and I go deep in the airtime, man. You know, going to get a chipper and, you know, usually the window closes.
And the other thing about the downtime, I'll call it, in whether you're going to Dexter or if you're going to Newport to pick this thing up. And then you got to bring it back. I mean, there's, that's just, you're spending an hour, hour and a half, you know, at least.
Yeah, we've got a chipper before and you'll get it and you'll start it up and you've got a snow fence wound into it. Or you get it and the blades are done. I mean, you're just wasting that time. We get probably six, seven days a year. And when you're spending days like that, and then if you get a six-inch chipper, that's something other people need to know. You get a nine-inch chipper, you're going to be able to do a six-inch tree. You get a nine inch chipper, you're going to be able to do a six inch tree. Or efficient. And a twelve, you'd be able to do a nine, but with Bill's firewood thing, yeah, you know, if you got a twelve inch chipper, you're going to be able to do it a lot faster. And that way you beat end my time.
Other discussion? Yes, I do.
Just one fact, Sangerville, Scotticus County has more roads to maintain gravel and paved than any other town except Dover Foxborough. A lot to do.
Any others? Okay, do we have some ballots?
I believe Alvinah should be out there with ballots.
Okay, let's have her come in.
Hope she is.
Let's pass the ballots, help.
We'll buy a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar fire truck, no comments at all.
I think he counted it eight minutes.
I guess the easiest way to do this would be just to.
We've got to get the ballots, we've got to get the ballots.
Could he use the power, could he use the fire thing?
Not yet. Not yet, you get a week.
All right.
That's why, that's, I am the smoker, okay? You may, I, he was.
Bill.
Okay, I'm going to recess if you want it, you can start my job quick. I meant, I thought you meant like smoking through the minute.
Okay, folks, that's why I died. I, I am going to ask once everybody gets a ballot. Did everyone get a ballot? Nope. We need ballots here.
Oh, just give us a handful, we've got one more.
May you want?
As long as I get a handful of you, Joe.
I think we're going to need some of these too. I think you're going to need to pass those out.
We know which way you're going.
Who needs a pen?
I do. I'll share.
Pen, share a pen. Pen, share a pen.
No, I don't think they ought to do that.
No, but they can, they can do it like.
Oh, you wait, you wait till I announce it, okay?
Has everyone got a ballot? Has everyone got a ballot that wants to vote? Okay.
Yes, so they're going to have to come in, Alvinah said.
Okay, well, let the, let the folks outside come in first. Then we're going to do it by row. For everybody to get, if you want the town to buy a chipper, vote yes. If you don't want to buy one, vote no.
Do I get my, take my number with me?
Let me put that in for you, Tom?
No, that's illegal to do.
You don't get the one.
Sorry, Bob. It's like the Catholic Church, they come get communion.
Make the first row first, come right up, folks. I know Mr. Row would have to be impatient, but you're going to have to be. The votes having on the outside row, yeah. In the second row.
That is illegal to do. That's right. Now the votes, like when, when we had the ATV special town meeting. Hey, I had nothing to do with that.
Why can't I?
Third row.
The earliest form of democracy. The Greek idea of the demos, you would go, all they would meet, meet on the big oak tree because you couldn't be a slave or.
Fourth row.
The earliest form of democracy.
Fourth row, Bob.
Are we going to wait for the count before we continue?
Oh, no, you're probably going to. Thank you.
Okay, the fifth row. Everyone, they're going to write that up, do you?
We don't have a special town unit for MRC.
And the back row. Did you guys all vote it?
Yeah, they all left.
Everybody voted here, well, I know that. Is there any way that wishes the votes that hasn't? Anyone at all? Did you ask that out there, is there anyone out there wishes the vote that hasn't? I'll make sure everybody gets the vote. Okay. We will. No, I'm going to go on to take the count.
Oh, you are? I can.
You can count?
I can.
That's good. Let's go.
Sue, you got all your toes?
What?
You got all your toes?
And Brady?
It's only half one.
You don't want them. Oh, come on up here.
Oh, wrong glasses. I better put the right ones on.
On mine?
No.
Okay, ready? Get some paper. They need some paper, the radar.
Need a writing stick too. Need some paper. I have paper if you need paper. You need any paper?
We got paper right there.
Okay, go for it. Okay, folks, I need your attention. If, unless there's an objection, we'll move on to Article Eight while they're counting. I need your attention, folks, please. We go to Article Eight, unless there's objections, we move in ahead while they're counting. Article Eight, whereas Article Seven in the two thousand sixteen annual town meeting warrant called for a two percent discount on early payment of property taxes and whereas Article Seven did not make it clear that the discount applied only to early payment of two thousand sixteen property taxes. Now therefore be it resolved to see if the town will allow a discount of two percent on two thousand sixteen property taxes paid in full before five P M, July thirty first, two thousand sixteen and vote to allow for payments received on taxes to be applied to tax pay of oldest outstanding tax bill. Can we have a motion?
Make a motion ahead, Red.
Do we have a second? Discussion? Anybody?
No.
Here and saying none, if you favor the article as I read it, please raise your hands. If you oppose it, raise your hands. You can resume the package.
How's it doing, Mr.?
Fifteen pounds.
Oh, we don't do it. We want you guys.
What was last year's, Paul?
Sorry.
Don't pay all of it, everything.
Okay, thank you for your attention. We will return to Article Seventeen after results of the vote. The yes vote is twenty-three, the no vote is thirty-five, the motion fails. And then it's, send London this this evening. I will never take a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Other discussion, all over favor. Thank you, folks, good meeting.